This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, sorry. If everyone could please mute themselves until they're ready to speak. That will help ensure good audio quality. Use mute/unmute button when you're ready to speak, or if you're calling in, star six to unmute and mute yourself. It's now 7:03, and I'm calling the July 1st meeting of the Brooks Free Library Board of Trustees to order. First, Ginny, can you read the Attorney General's open meeting announcement?
Sure. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th order superseding certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Brooks Free Library Board of Trustees is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted, but every effort has been made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. Members of the public who would like to join the meeting live may do so by using the link or the phone number provided in the agenda. This meeting is being recorded and will be shown on Channel 18, on Comcast, and available on Channel 18 on demand and on YouTube.
Yes? Okay. We're going to have a call to order. I'm Joan McCarty, the Vice Chair of the Board. The previous chairman was Mary Ward, whose term expired yesterday, so that position is vacant, and I'll be running tonight's meeting. I'd like to start with the roll call of the other trustees who are present. Bill Crowell. I read his lips.
Present.
Thank you. Kathleen Remillard.
Present.
Bernadette Waystack.
Present.
Jeanne Wheeler.
Present.
Joanne Brown was re-elected yesterday. Joanne, have you been sworn in yet by the town clerk? You've got to unmute. Joanne, unmute. Could you unmute, Joanne? Okay. Shake your head yes or no. Were you sworn in? No. Joanne was not sworn in, so she will not be able to vote today.
I'm sorry, Joanne, if you can hear us, right? You may want to call in so that you can participate. Do you have the number? It's on the agenda.
Or unmute.
Or unmute. She was talking earlier, right? Yes, she was talking earlier, but she's not. I'm trying to point to that little symbol, and we're not going places. Okay? I'm going to continue. Joining the Board tonight is Linda Sibula, who was elected just yesterday. Linda, have you been sworn in by the town clerk yet?
I have not.
Okay, then you will not be able to vote tonight. Also joined by, we are also joined by Library Director Ginny Hewitt.
Hello.
Is Emily?
Emily is not with us tonight.
Okay. And Stephen Ford is not with us again tonight. Hang on just a second. Let me get the second page. Okay. We're to the approval of the Wednesday, March 4th, 2020 meeting. Ginny?
So I wanted to postpone the minutes. As you probably noticed, there are a lot of typos. We didn't realize when we were sending them out that they were still in draft form. And so there's a few, there's a few typos, and it's not the normal quality, so we'd like to fix that. And then next month, we can do both the March 4th and the June 18th minutes.
Thank you very much. Next, we have public comment.
Madam Chair, would you like a motion to table the minutes till the next meeting?
Certainly. Thank you very much, Bernadette. Yes.
I'll make a motion that we table the minutes of the March 4th and the June 18th meeting until our next meeting.
Second.
Do we have a second? Jeanne? Okay, all in favor?
Oh, no, you have to call Joan.
Oh, any discussion? What am I supposed to do?
We need to do a roll call. So just look at one of the other places we're doing a roll call and list off the people.
Okay. Bernadette made the motion, Jeanne Wheeler seconded the motion, Kathleen Remillard, Bill Crowell, and Joan McCarty have all approved it.
I take the roll call, Joan.
Yeah.
Call my name.
Okay, I'm sorry. Bill Crowell.
In favor.
Kathleen Remillard.
In favor.
Bernadette Waystack.
In favor.
Jeanne Wheeler.
In favor.
Thank you. It was very...
And yourself, Joan.
I apologize. This is the first time I've done this, so I'm overwhelmed.
I figured out the answer.
Thanks.
Be close to Joan. You had to vote yourself, too, just then.
Oh, okay, I voted. Joan, yes. Joan, yes. Um, okay, I'm sorry.
You're doing fine.
Um, I'm kind of losing all these pages.
Number on the bottom, page two.
Okay. We have no correspondence. Old business.
Actually, we're before that, we've got public comment.
We got all those reports. Sorry, I was really hoping for more. The reports.
Public comment, Joan.
All right. Do we have anyone who's joined us online or called in that would like to make a comment? Please identify yourself for the record, and then make your comment.
I don't see anyone, but it kind of goes off the screen for me, but I don't think anyone has joined us.
Okay. We're now forwarding to the reports. Yes. Okay, I thought somebody was saying something, and I, all right, the chairman report. Mary Ward compiled your responses and completed the library director's evaluation. She met with Ginny on Monday to discuss it. Ginny will mail out a copy of the completed evaluations to you. The next report is the library director. Ginny?
Hi there. I know it's only been two weeks since we met, but it seems like a long time, in terms of curbside pickup. So since, it's going really well. Since starting on July 1st, we've doubled the number of patrons that we allow per session, so from going from 10 to 20 for each half hour period. We had originally limited patrons to five items per appointment, then went to 10, and now we have no limit. We've added more days. We started at three days a week, and now we're doing it all the five days that we're allowed to be open, so Monday to Friday, with a mixture of morning, you know, daytime, afternoon, and evening hours. Originally, we had 12 sessions, you know, pickup sessions a week, and now we're at 29. So we've gone from actually 120 time slots available to 580, so that's like more than enough to meet demand. At one point, we were, we were having, if we called you on a Tuesday, we were scheduling you for a week from Thursday. It was way far out. There was a huge backlog. So now, you know, we've got things going, and usually people can get the same day or within a couple days, depending on their schedules, and that works out really well. I'm going to hold this up. I don't know if you can see this, but this is a graph that Ann Capenter, our Youth Services Librarian, did. So it starts out, this is the first week when we were just doing holds, you know, what was already on the hold shelf, and the color codes are days of the week. So this was the next week, and then you can see we added more days. And finally, this was just Monday and Tuesday of this week, when, you know, we're higher than we were starting out. So it's been pretty busy. We've had, we've had almost over 6,000 items checked out since we started this, and 16, over 1,600 patrons. So that's really good. We're really pleased about that. But it's very time-consuming. And I'll say, our delivery started, interlibrary loan delivery started last week, and that's been fun. You know, we probably had, I don't know, 60, 65 bins here that they had to pick up, you know, they could only take so many per day. And anyway, we had a huge backlog of a lot of things coming in, and we've got that cleared out. Now that delivery is operating again, we can run a normal holds list. We call it a paging list of what people are requesting, and so we don't have to do any annual workarounds for that anymore. But there were over 500 items on that list to go out to other libraries when we were able to print it, so that took a while to get through as well. So now people can place holds on items that other libraries own, and they'll come in the normal delivery time, which is usually three to five days. But now adding in the quarantine period, so maybe a week, a little longer than that, before we call people to schedule. But at least, you know, the system's going again. It's, you know, a huge relief. We really depend on that. So I wanted to mention, too, our summer reading program has started. It's all online. We've been logging reading time for years online. People could do it here, but they could also access it from home, so that part isn't different. And so now youngsters will come to our pickup area to pick up grab-and-go prizes. And, you know, as we've talked about last year, Ann started making a lot of activity kits, so that it's something more interactive, not just, you know, a little prize that, you know, doesn't really last long or mean anything to them. So this week, the kits have been, how to make homemade slime, so they've got all the materials there, and they're all bagged up. And that'll just be out there. We're not, we're not really requiring reading time. It's not, we're not going, there's no way to really be checking logs. It's basically an honor system, and we think that'll work fine. So one of the things, though, for children and teens, they don't usually pick out books, you know, by the same way as adults by placing requests. But there are also adults that don't have a specific title in mind, so one of the things we want people to know is that staff members are ready to help. You know, people can give us a call, 508-430-7562, extension one, and talk to a staff member about what they like to read, and we'll put together a bag of materials for you. It can't hurt. You know, you may get five books, and maybe you're interested in three of them, but not the other two, but at least you have something to read. And so, anyway, we want to encourage people to call. We've seen a big increase since school got out and the number of children's materials, because that was concerning us for a long time, because that's not really how you pick out books for kids. Usually, you just pick it out by sight, you know. So anyway, library fines will continue to be waived, so people shouldn't worry about that either. Couple other things. About six months ago, we, well, let me back up. Over the past 10 years, we've used CPC funds several times to digitize some historic newspapers. And the Cape Cod Five Bank paid for the Cape Cod Republican newspaper to be digitized even before that. So there's the Howard Independent, Cape Cod Republican, and the Central Cape Press, and they've all been digitized, but people had to come in here to use them and use them on our research computer. So about six months ago, we contracted with a firm to basically create a consistent interface, like a search interface, to make it easy for patrons to find, you know, what they want. And so now, we're paying the same company to host it online, and that just happened, you know, in the past couple weeks. So that is online, and it should get a lot of use. The other thing, because it's, yesterday was the end of the fiscal year. I was looking at some of the statistics that most will have to wait for the automated system, but some you kind of have to catch them right at the end of the year. And one was, if you remember, about 18 months ago, we had the, I think it was 165 years of annual town reports digitized by the Boston Public Library and the Digital Commonwealth, and they've been up online for 18 months. So I looked to see what we, this year, almost 4,500 views, which is really great. A reference librarian was telling me today that before the reports were online, she saw maybe 20 people a year came in to ask to look through them, and so this is a huge increase. Since we've had them online, it's over 7,000 views. So that's really good. So that kind of goes along with the historic newspapers, you know, both access to all that content. The other thing I was looking at, it's a new requirement on state reporting that you report how many hits or views your website has. It used to be on there, but it was optional. We didn't really have a method to count that, so we never did. But anyway, last year, we had to add one, and so this is the first year we have statistics. 6,000, over 60,000, close to 61,000 views in the past 12 months. And the highest was 474 views on March 13th. That is the day that we closed to the public at 3:45. So my guess is, most of those views that day were after that, you know, after we put out press and social media and updated the website. So people were looking for information or to find out, you know, maybe it was other librarians looking to see if we had closed and when they might close. And I thought that was kind of interesting. As soon as I saw the date, I knew why that was the highest date. So anyway, that's my report.
Thank you, Ginny.
And I'm sorry, I didn't give it in writing this, because when we were doing the agenda last week, it had only been a week since we met. I didn't really have anything new to say at that point.
I think that's fine. It's good to get all the updates. You have enough on your plate right now. Next is building and grounds. Jeanne or Joanne? Well, I don't know.
Joanne, you want to go first, or do you want me to?
The improvements, you can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. The recent improvements to the HVAC system over the winter not only made the building more energy efficient, it included installation of an energy management system. The new controls have eliminated the areas which would be freezing at this time of year.
It is really nice, I must say, not to be dressed in winter clothes.
You never knew when you came into, what would be happening. The new controls have taken care of that, receiving too much air conditioning, and the building stays a nice, even temperature. That's what we're going for.
Very nice. Very nice.
Also, there was a fairly large leak in the clean water pipes in between the men and women's restrooms in the basement. Excuse me, it involved a lot of work for DPW to access the pipes. There's still work in repairing it, but since the building isn't open to the public, having the restrooms closed hasn't really been a real inconvenience and makes their work easier. Also, on Monday, Dana DeCosta and another crew member from DPW did extensive amount of trimming of the bourses and trees on the property, clearing out where they were touching the building and where they're overhanging the driveway and the upper parking lot. They were there most of the day, but did a really excellent job.
Wonderful.
That's it.
Thank you very much, Joanne. Jeanne. And Mr. Ford is not here tonight. Ginny, did you have anything from him?
No, I don't.
Okay. We do not have any correspondence, is that right, Ginny?
No, we don't.
All right, we're going to go to old business, and I'm going to have Ginny take over for FY '21, July, August, and September monthly budgets.
So it's still a little unclear how all this works, but we received our spending, our budget, basically as a spending limit for July. We don't anticipate there'll be any problems. We should be able to pay all the normal yearly contracts we pay. One thing I did want to mention, though, we don't have, because it was just yesterday, I can't give you the final fiscal 20 numbers. We still have invoices to come in. But we should be turning back approximately 16,000 in salary and wages and another 36,000 in expense line. And that's because we haven't been hiring substitutes since March 13th. And, you know, so our salary and wages line is down. And also, we, you know, we've had the spending freeze on the collection, and it's just not normal operation, so our expenses are less even before the spending freeze. So that's, that's that. You know, I'll give you the updated numbers next month, the final fiscal year 20 numbers.
All right.
For fiscal '21, that's number, item B. We haven't received any information on the fiscal '21 budget. We should be getting that hopefully in the next few weeks as they, you know, work to set up a budget for the September town meeting. So I will keep you updated on that as well.
And could we have a status report on the ability to provide curbside pickup services on Saturday?
So we still don't have authorization to provide Saturday service. The Governor's Order requires daily disinfection of workplaces in order to have staff in the building, and the town isn't able to provide that. I haven't received any word on when that might be. The town did just contract with a firm to provide custodial cleaning and disinfection of restrooms, but it was only the beaches and the parks, so not town buildings. So no change in that status. We're still waiting for approval to have staff in the building on Saturday so we can offer that service. Other, I know other town buildings may be facing similar issues, so.
Yes. Okay, how about an update on the phased resumption of services?
Okay, so we've had a lot of patron interest on when they can come in and browse the shelves and select materials. But under the Governor's Order, that's prohibited in this phase. If a library allows patrons to come inside, it's basically like you're moving curbside pickup indoors. They can only come to the circulation desk to check out what's already on hold and checked out to them. So it's basically a quick transaction. You can't browse the shelves. You can't discuss what books you might be interested in. All that's supposed to happen either online or by phone. Basically, it's just grabbing your items and going. So the current phase also prohibits any use of public computers or shared technology. So there's no real advantage to switching to inside pickup. It just, by allowing an inside pickup, it's meant to help libraries that can't provide outside, curbside pickup outside for whatever reason. Or like for us, we've got a great overhang, so we can provide that service in all weather outside, but some libraries don't have that luxury, so they would need to move it inside. But so, right now, it's no, there's no real advantage to us to have people in, since they can only pick up what they, it would work just like it's doing outside, and that, people are not going to be satisfied with that. It's just going to increase the amount of frustration and negative interaction, you know, as staff have to tell people, no, you can't go look at the books, or no, you can't use a computer. So the next phase is supposed to start July 6th, but we haven't received any information about what that entails for libraries, or if it makes any changes. But even when inside access is allowed, we'll have to be very cautious. It would likely be limited in certain areas, a limited access to certain areas. Once people come in, you're really increasing the amount of disinfection that's needed. The other thing is, we can't open up to the public until the building is retrofitted. We've received four acrylic panels for public service desks from the town, but we'll need four, at least four more. The town hasn't yet done site visits to assess the building for compliance with regulations, really what they needed for staff to work in the building, you know, and then, of course, to have the public. So we'll need to have that before we can have people in. The town will need to advise us on occupancy limits. It's not just the occupancy limit of the building. They look at each space. That's why I don't have the expertise to do that. The town will need to tell us. So that. So again, we'd have to go cautiously, and like I said, we would be, once, I don't want people to have the expectation that it will be business as normal. It would likely be limited to certain areas, a small number of patrons at one time, maybe limited use of the computers by appointment, time limits on how long people can stay. So because of all of this, many of the libraries on the Cape are planning to stay with curbside pickup for, if not all, of the summer. It's just too difficult to manage patrons' behaviors and expectations to ensure compliance with all the restrictions. And, you know, in the summer, our use of the library normally doubles. And right now, all of the staff is spending, like, it's all hands on deck to do the pickup by appointment. So to do that with people inside the building, it would just be, it just doesn't seem feasible. So I'm not ruling it out, but it's unlikely that we'd be able to offer it, certainly not for the month of July. And then we'll assess how it goes. So that's where we are on that.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much. Well, we're now doing the new business, reorganization of the Board. Now, does it make sense? Do we have to do that this, this week, or could we put it off till everybody, all the members are voting members? I mean, if we waited till next month, I'd be glad to do this again, if you can tolerate it. And then everybody will be eligible to, I'm not letting Joanne get off that easily.
Joan?
Yes, Bernadette?
I think that makes sense, because off the top of my head, I don't know if we would have a problem with trying to do it with people who haven't been officially sworn in, but they do want to take a position. As I think, first of all, you've done a wonderful job, and I think if you're willing to carry it over till the next month, I think we're safer that way. There could be no, there's no question about we did something wrong. I don't know if we could or we couldn't, but we'd err on the side of caution.
Anybody else have any opinion about it?
It's okay with me.
Okay. Kathleen?
Okay.
Do I need to hold for it?
It's okay.
Thank you. Do I need to postpone? Beg your pardon?
I have an opinion.
Okay.
I think it gives us, you, more time to get used to your new role as chair.
Don't be silly, okay?
That's it.
Yeah, you're so fresh. Bernadette asked to be treasurer, so you could be chair.
No, I'd never be a treasurer. I don't know either whether we need a formal motion, but if we do, I'll make a motion that we table reorganization of the Board until the August 5th meeting.
Oh, that it. Bernadette has made the motion, and Jeanne Wheeler has seconded the motion, and we'll take a vote now. Kathleen?
In favor.
Jeanne?
In favor.
Bill?
Aye.
You throw me off. I'm waiting. I thought it was the beginning of a sentence. Bernadette?
In favor. Yeah, we usually do say aye. Aye in favor.
It's passed unanimously. We're going to wait until next month and make an election for the Board. All right, now, if you'll just bear with me so I can see what I'm messing up.
You're doing a great job, Joan.
Pardon me?
You're doing a great job.
If Ginny hadn't given me a cheat sheet, we'd be right out of luck. We traditionally designate four trustees to share the responsibility for coming in to review and sign invoices, personnel actions, and payroll. Though as elected members of the Board, any member can sign a if one of the four designated are not available. I have been doing it most weeks, but traditionally, one trustee is assigned to come in weekly on a rotating basis to sign payroll and invoices anytime from 10:00 a.m. on Monday morning until 10:00 a.m. on Tuesday morning. Do I have any motions?
I can do it.
Okay, thank you. I truly have no problem doing it. This is if something happens and I can't do it, I'd like to be able to call somebody.
Where's my sidekick?
Can she volunteer for, yeah? Joanne? Can Joanne?
I volunteer.
Good girl. Okay, since you're riding on a free trip right now, Linda, I might have to ask you. Oh, Kathleen retired too.
I'll do it.
Wonderful. All right, we've had Kathleen and Joan. Joanne, can I do this if Joanne isn't sworn in yet?
Well, she can't, I would say she can't sign until she's sworn in.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
She could be elected, appointed.
All right, so we now have Kathleen, Jeannie, Joanne, and myself. And I need to get a roll call. Do I have to do it for each one?
No.
Okay, well, that's it then. We're now for acceptance of donations and we do not have any donations this month.
Were you going to take a, I thought you were going to still take a vote on this.
Oh, I didn't, I thought you said I didn't need to, okay.
I thought you were asking individually.
You have, you have those names. Do I have to be per person or do I have to do just, okay, the whole thing?
Vote the block.
Okay, I'd like to have a motion to list Kathleen, Jeannie, Joan, and Joanne to sign bills for the, for the library. And can somebody make a motion?
So moved.
Bernadette Waystaff made the motion and seconded? Okay, now I go through a roll call for yes or no? Do you do this every time, I don't remember this stuff. All right, Kathleen?
Robert's Rules of Order.
Kathleen?
Hi. Yes.
Okay, I'm looking at your picture and your mouth isn't moving, but I can hear something. All right. Jeannie?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Bernadette?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so it's unanimous.
Can I say, I just want to make one comment. During the pandemic, they suspended the rule that the trustees sign anything. And at some point, you know, we have copies of everything that, I don't know, they may have some general document for the town that covers that time period, although they may ask them all to be signed. But I think it's a good practice to have and like it's time to get back into that because, you know, some things, it just, you do have operational authority and, you know, and this makes it clear. You know, it's inconvenient, I know, for people to come in and we really appreciate it. But I think it's important because you do have that control.
Ginny, I could come in easily, any, next week I'm going to have the baby. I could sign them at home or I could come in in the late afternoon.
They're still doing, actually, town hall, I think, may open next week. And so maybe, maybe, maybe we have a couple of weeks before we need to start this. But I just think in general, it's good. Right now, they've been taking electronic copies of, you know, I sign it and then we scan it and send it and they're doing everything that way. But once they open up, then they may change the procedure. And then that would be the time we need to start doing it again.
Absolutely, sounds good to me. Okay. All right. And we're up to trustees' reports and requests for next meeting's agenda. Any items the trustees would like to discuss or request for agenda items or information at next month's meeting? As you know, we voted in March to meet on the first Wednesday evening of the month at 7:00 p.m. That will depend right now on our ability to have this meeting available live, online, or by phone. And only one board or committee can meet at a time. We'll be requesting August 1st, but we'll have to wait to see if that date is available and it's approved. Because this is a remote meeting, I'd like to ask once again if there is anyone who would like to comment for public comment.
Looks like it's a no. Joan?
I'm not sure how I tell that, so I don't know.
I am, we give it like a moment of silence. Joan, I made a mistake on that. It's not August 1st, it's August 5th, is the first Wednesday. And I believe, because as it turns out, the conservation commission is meeting tonight and our meeting is not live. And so apparently this is allowed. You know, so we, in other words, we should, we're pretty well assured of having the August 5th, 7:00 p.m. date available.
All right, hopefully.
Joan, I have a comment.
Yes. I hope, nice.
I missed it during Jeannie or Joanne's presentation about buildings and grounds. The enclosure for the heating AC unit in the rear of the library, the parking lot, looks so much better. It was really looking really pretty shabby. And I think it's improved the appearance greatly. Whoever was responsible for that, I don't know if you've been waiting forever for the town to do it or what, but it improves it tremendously, as far as I'm concerned.
They actually did that last summer or fall, Bill. Eric Eldridge and Wes at DPW, they work for Sean Libby, did that. It looks really nice. Perhaps you notice it more because there's not always cars parked in front of it right now.
Well, that, yeah, that could be it. And I've been meaning to say it for a while, but.
It does look really nice, yeah.
All right. I'm sorry, Ginny, number nine seems to be crossed out. Is that all right?
Yeah, it's just on the agenda. I don't need to.
Okay, I just didn't know if I was supposed to be doing something with it.
I just noticed when the agenda went out that the election was coming up, which has already happened.
It's already gone.
All right. I believe that we're done. If I may have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Jeannie Wheeler has made a motion and seconded by?
I can.
Bernadette, okay, thank you. I couldn't see if I saw your mouth.
That's right, I didn't want to keep making all the motions, so thanks.
That's a good thing. All right, and I need to take a roll call for the adjournment. Bernadette?
Point of order, Madam Vice Chairman. You've done a wonderful job this evening.
Oh, thank you very much. I'm freezing right now, I can't wait to get home.
And I vote to adjourn.
Thank you. Bill?
I endorse what Bernadette just said. You did a great job, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Kathleen, are you?
I'm still very much in favor of adjournment.
I'm sorry?
I said I'm still very much in favor of adjournment.
Okay, yeah, so glad. Kathleen?
I vote aye and thank you for doing the meeting.
My pleasure. Jeannie?
Aye, great job, Joan.
Thank you very much. The meeting is adjourned at 7:47. No, wait a minute. I think I, I didn't learn those things with the watch. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. See you next month.
Thank you, see you next month.
Thank you.
It's saving to the cloud while I'm trying to stop the recording.
Why am I not canceled out here?
Yeah, mine didn't cancel either.
It may be waiting while it's saving to the cloud.